All right, welcome to the Pleasanton Regularly Scheduled Planning Commission. For July 27th, we're grateful you're all here in attendance with us, whether in person or virtually. In accordance with Governor Gadsden Newsom's Executive Order N 2920 and approved A B 361 suspending provisions of the Brown Act, along with COVID-19 protocols, this meeting is being conducted via virtual setting using Zoom in addition to those that are here in the City Council chambers. Planning Commission and staff are participating. Well, the public is participating from remote locations, or they can join us here in the City Council chambers. Members of the public are given the opportunity to join, either in person or virtually, as noted on the agenda. As a reminder, for the format of the public comment during the meeting, those who wish to speak may either submit a comment card in advance of or during the meeting, or they may raise their hand using the Zoom function during the open public comment period throughout the course of the meeting, as I will indicate. An individual may speak once on any agenda item. Let's begin with the flag salute. I've asked Commissioner Allen to lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and justice for all.
Thanks Nancy. So I'll ask the Recording Secretary to conduct a roll call, and we'll do alphabetical by last name, please.
Commissioners Allen.
Here.
Gatos.
Here.
Morgan.
Here.
Nybert.
Here.
Chair Pace.
Here, thank you Estelle.
Okay, Commissioner Brown is absent, and we have a quorum.
Thank you. So let me just check the calendar. Looks like items 1 through 4 are the consent calendar, thank you. Looks like items 1 through 4 are the consent calendar. Consent calendar items are items that are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion unless requests for removal, for discussion, or explanation is received from a member of the Planning Commission, or by a member of the public who has previously submitted his speaker card for an item. Since we're in a... So let me just quickly ask if any members of the Commission have any questions. Oh, you know what, I forgot to ask about agenda amendments. Do I have any agenda amendments?
No amendments.
Okay, thanks, sorry for that, out of order. Okay, now I'll ask my fellow commissioners if they have any items on the consent calendar that they wish to discuss or need an explanation for. So I started with Commissioner Allen, so I'll start with Vice Chair Gatos.
I do not.
Commissioner Morgan.
I do not, thank you.
Commissioner Nybert.
No, I do not.
Commissioner Allen.
One update to the minutes. And this is on the bottom of page 3 of 4 of the April 27 minutes, where the line talks about the sign frontage, and it says we agreed that, by consensus, the Commission agreed to requiring one sign per frontage with staff's determination to waive the requirement and/or adding additional signs for long frontages. I believe we all... That I also requested more... Or multiple frontages, long frontages or multiple frontages, that staff would have discretion to request that.
Sorry, I thought that it said that. So can you read the language again Nancy, I apologize.
It says, "By consensus, the Commission agreed to requiring one sign per frontage." Oh, it does.
Yeah.
Okay, yes, so, thank you for that.
Okay, all right.
I missed that.
Okay.
Cancel that comment.
All right, okay. Yeah, okay, so, anybody else? Okay, do we get it? Do we have any speaker cards on this one?
None were received.
Okay, thank you. So I'll entertain a motion for the consent calendar.
I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
So was that Nybert who seconded? Okay, thank you.
You want to conduct a roll call?
Yeah, since we have the covers.
So just, so usually we're in the room, I just do it this way, but because we have covered mouths covered, I'm just gonna, for the sake of clarity, I'm just gonna have a roll call, okay?
Okay, Commissioners Allen.
Yes.
Gatos.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Nybert.
Yes.
Pace.
Yes, all right, great, so we have consent, unanimous consent, thank you, appreciate the help. Okay, so the next item should be meeting open to the public. These are any items that members of the public may wish to address to the Commission for items that are not currently listed on the agenda. Normally, no action may be considered or taken on any matter not listed on the agenda. Each speaker will be entitled to speak for three minutes. If you haven't submitted a speaker card but would like to speak during this general public comment period, please raise your hand at this time using the Zoom feature, or press star nine on your telephone. Those who submitted a speaker card will be followed by those who have raised their hand. Staff, have there been any requests to speak on any items not on the agenda?
There have been none.
Okay, thank you. We will close the public hearing for not... Non-agenda-ized items. So now, let's proceed to Agenda Item Number 6, which is the Universal Design in New Residential Development. Who has this one?
So before turning this over, I just wanted to provide a very, very quick introduction. So as noted, this is an item to consider, some enhanced accessibility and universal design standards for new residential development. Here with me tonight, Building Official Rob Carolo, providing the presentation. I don't think you've met Rob before, so I wanted to introduce him. And he and Melinda worked very closely together on developing this ordinance. We took this as a policy item to the City Council back in April, and so much of what we're doing here tonight follows the direction and guidance that we received at sort of a higher level from the Council, drilling down into some of the details. So we look forward to your input tonight on this item.
Thanks, thanks Ellen. Welcome Rob, we're glad you're here.
Thank you. So good evening Commissioners. So I'm here with you tonight to discuss the residential accessibility and universal design measures, as Ellen mentioned. I'm gonna start by giving you a little background on how we got here, and then go into explaining how the current building codes apply to multifamily residential projects, and what options we have for enhancing some of those accessibility features in both multifamily and single-family. So, for the background, as part of the Council work plan, Council included an action to amend the city's code and development standards to enhance accessibility requirements in new construction. It was given an A priority, which means substantial progress or completion by fiscal year 21/22. The universal design concept was presented to Council on April 19th, and Council directed staff to proceed with the following. Bring forward for consideration a universal design ordinance for single-family duplex and triplex units. Develop and implement a universal design checklist that would require developers to provide a list of accessibility features that are available for projects. And then lastly, update the current conditions of approval for multifamily that we have for projects over 15 units to include additional universal features and enhancements. So, I'll start by, what's accessibility? So accessibility, as defined by the California Building Code, is a combination of various elements in buildings which allow access, circulation, and the full use of building facilities by persons of disabilities. Essentially, it means providing facilities or modify for persons of all abilities. Universal design is a principle whereby products, components, and the physical environment are made more usable by as many people as possible with various levels of ability at little or to no extra cost. So, you guys probably hear all the time the terminology ADA, ADA parking, ADA sidewalks, you know, we need to meet ADA standards. ADA is actually, stands for the Americans with Disabilities Act, which is a federal law that was enacted in 1990 to prohibit discrimination against persons with disabilities in all areas of public life. The places of employment, transportation, public, private places, that are open to the general public. And so it's things like restaurants, banks, stores, et cetera. As a result of that federal law, they came up with ADA design guidelines, and those ADA design guidelines are drafted to provide specific design criteria for new construction, alterations, program accessibility, and barrier removal in public spaces. The latest version of it is what is there on the screen, the 2010 ADA standards. However, it's important to note that us, local agencies, we don't enforce ADA standards. We enforce what's called the California Building Code, specifically Chapter 11. That has all the ADA standards. So in fact, in 2013, Chapter 11 was completely revised and rewritten to reflect a lot of the same layout and many of the same requirements as the 2010 standards that ADA has. So CBC Chapter 11 requirements are actually more restrictive than ADA. So essentially, if you build a building to Chapter 11 standards, it's gonna always meet or exceed the ADA standards. Okay, so the California Building Code is located in Title 24 of the California Code of Regulations, and there's two parts. There's Part 11A that covers privately funded multifamily buildings, and then there's 11B that covers publicly funded, public buildings, public accommodations, commercial buildings. It's important to note that Chapter 11 of the CBC does not apply to single-family duplex or three-unit condos, unless they're built with public funds. So the code uses this word called covered multifamily dwellings. So to explain covered multifamily dwellings, there's two things to consider. First, is it a condominium with four or more units, or an apartment with three or more? And if the answer is yes, then you look to see if it's elevated or non-elevated. So here in this picture, hopefully my pointer works, but this first building with the staircase is non-elevated, so covered buildings would be just the ground floor units. And the one, the second picture here, is a three-story building, elevated, so every unit would be a covered unit, under the code. So the code states that covered units have to be made adaptable. Adaptable is defined as an accessible dwelling unit within a covered multifamily dwelling that is designed with elements and spaces allowing the units to be adapted or adjusted to accommodate the user. So all adaptable units contain the following features to make the unit accessible with minimal modifications. Accessible route through the unit, maneuvering clearances, special door hardware such as lever types, clear floor space at the kitchen and bathroom fixtures, it's a 30 by 48 clear space for a wheelchair, grab bar backing installed behind tubs or shower walls, receptacle heights that are raised to 15 inches minimum above floor, and then switches that are lower to 48 inches above finished floor, and accessible doorway dimensions and hallway widths. The reason the code allows for adaptability is to balance individuals' needs. I think it's important to remember that not everybody has the same disability, so some individuals want fully built-out units and others don't. It's just depending on their preference. And also, adding extensive accessibility features to each unit could be quite costly to construct. So that's why it's a good thing to have adaptable features and not fully built out. So here's an example of an adaptable unit. The top picture here, typically, this picture's not perfect, but typically the cabinet front's covered right here. And you can remove it with little effort or tool, the code, little effort or tool definition is simply as a screwdriver. And when you remove that cabinet front, the floor would be finished underneath, so wheelchair doesn't get hung up on the front wheels, and also provides a finished look, and also clear workspace. Over here at the bottom picture, that would be your clear accessible route, 36 inches minimum wide at the hallway, and then doorways can be down to 32 inches minimum. And the reason those dimensions is a typical wheelchair is 27 inches wide, so that allows for knuckle space with the 36 inches. So the code here again allows for more options. Top unit, this top picture here is roll-in shower, or you could have a tub shower with grab bars. So it allows for either or, it doesn't require one or the other. And there again, that's because people have different needs. Some people need a tub for soaking, some people need a shower for roll-in features. Over here, countertops, again, there's options. There's a repositionable countertop, or a lowered countertop like you see in this top picture here, or you can have two 15-inch breadboards that suffices at the proper height of 34 inches. So the CBC is adopted into the Pleasanton Municipal Code by reference with limited local amendments. In fact, the state law states that the code can only be amended based on specific findings, and they have to be based on climatic, geological, or topographical conditions only. You can't just modify the code for any given reason. So to give an example, here in the Bay Area, we modify the code for gypsum wall boards for sheer bracing. Because we're in a high seismic area, it's a geographical reason why we modified that out, we don't allow that, because it does not hold up in an earthquake. And that's just not Pleasanton, that's the whole entire greater Bay Area modifies to go for that, but there's a specific finding, a geological finding for that. So unfortunately, with accessibility, local, more stringent accessibility requirements would not be covered under those three findings, and wouldn't be permissible. So, since we can't amend the CBC, what options do we have? The first option is we can adopt the universal design ordinance, A B 2787, which we're bringing forward to you tonight. Come up with a universal checklist per A B 1400, which we also drafted for you tonight. And then provide project-specific conditions of approval that we can do during the planning entitlement phase, which is something that we've been doing for quite some time on 15 or more units. So to get into these a little bit deeper, in 2002, the state adopted A B 2787, which authorizes the Department of Housing and Community Development to develop guidelines and model universal design ordinance that could be adopted by local jurisdictions if they so choose. It's important to note that in this ordinance, it only applies to single-family, except for custom homes, duplex and triplex units. It does not apply to multifamily. These types of projects are not covered under Chapter 11 of the CBC, multifamily is. So essentially, the state is providing a way for local jurisdictions to address accessibilities in areas that the code doesn't. However, it should be noted that new in the 2022 code that we're gonna bring this fall to Council for adoption, the residential code that'll be effective January 1st of 2023, did put in a section that's called Aging in Place and Fall Protection. So it actually incorporates some of the features that we're discussing tonight, that are actually gonna be codified in the code and part of state law for residential, all new residential buildings. It doesn't go as far as our universal design, but it's a start. They do have some features, such as grab bar backing, switch receptacle, switch heights, receptacle heights, and bathroom door widths in that section now that will be adopted. So this model ordinance that we came up with allows a range of accessibility features that are very similar to Chapter 11, that's required for covered multifamily dwellings. The requirements can be made mandatory or optional per this ordinance. However, local jurisdictions are required to be in substantial conformance to the state's model ordinance. So locally, Dublin and Fremont adopted similar ordinances. A majority of their features are optional, but it gives potential buyers the opportunity to have those features if they so choose. So, staff carefully reviewed the model ordinance, and feels that ordinance, the PMC, adding Section 20.75 for new single-family duplex and triplex units is appropriate. The ordinance applies to new developments with 10 or more single-family duplex or triplex residentials, except for custom homes, as I stated before. And through conditions of approval for the project, during the planning entitlement phase, it must be written to ensure compliance with this provision. So these would be something that during the entitlement phase, the developers would be made aware of. There are exemptions however to the ordinance, one of the, mainly when the chief building official determines that compliance with any portion of any of the regulations under the chapter would create an undue hardship, an exception could be granted. So it basically applies to topographical conditions, reconstruction as a result of a disaster such as a fire, or the primary entry of the home is above grade, either due to another dwelling unit being underneath it, or a subterranean parking garage. All right, so features that we have in here that are to be included and required by the developer is a doorbell installed at 48 inches max above finished floor, an accessible primary entrance, minimum floor landing at the door to accommodate a wheelchair, primary entry door consistent with Chapter 11A of the CBC, or a minimum 34-inch opening, an accessible route through the unit to the key rooms such as the bathroom, kitchen, and living area, and then require at least one bathroom with grab bar backing, and that's actually required in the 2022 residential code now. Compliant faucets, meaning the handles are, don't require any tight grisping, pinching, grasping. Clear floor space, accessible tub or shower, sink, toilet, mirror, and towel bars that are at the accessible levels, heights I should say. In the kitchens, kitchen with an accessible sink control, and accessible route to the kitchen itself, at least one bedroom on the primary level, including wider openings of the closet with adjustable clothing rods and shelves. And then, there's also some other features, such as electrical receptacles, like I mentioned before, 15 inches to 48 inches in height, 32-inch minimum clear door openings at at least one bedroom and at the bathroom. It should be noted that the ordinance also includes features that are mandatory to offer, but not required for the developer to install at the time of the sale. Those items would be up to the owner to choose if they like, and have them installed at their own expense. In 2003, A B 1400 required HCD to develop and adopt a new home universal design checklist for for-sale projects. It's required to be provided by the developer to the buyer when purchasing the home. So basically, it lets the buyer know what's included as a standard, what's limited, what can be offered for an additional cost. It also provides a timeline of when they need to make the decision by, in order to get those features incorporated into their home. State law does not require local agencies to adopt the checklist, however several cities have. Council did direct us to go ahead and draft the checklist and bring it forward, so we did that. Our checklist looks like this here on the slide, this is just one-page example of it, but it, as under status, you'll see MO for mandatory offer, MI for mandatory included. So lastly, to address multifamily projects, since like I said before, we can't amend Chapter 11 of the CBC, we can continue to use our condition of approval as a tool for developers to provide enhanced accessibility features on new projects. The universal design topic's been coming up, it's come up in the past for multifamily projects, and the city successfully negotiated enhanced accessibility features at the planning entitlement phase many times before. Our current condition applies to covered multifamily dwelling units over 15. The list of features is consistent with the California Building Code, however, there's a few things that exceed the California Building Code, such as the lowering of windowsill heights so seated individuals can see out of them, increasing the hallway widths from 36 to 44, specific loop-style cabinet hardware for ease of opening cabinet doors, and then also providing adjustable shelving in the closets. So, to address Council's desire to further enhance those features on multifamily, we've proposed to modify the introductory text to emphasize coordination and input from the future resident on desired features from the list. We also propose to modify Item A that requires at least 4% of the adaptable units to install audible and visual capability doorbells. And then lastly, to modify Section P to require at least 10% of the adaptable units to include fully accessible built-out roll-in showers or accessible tub showers. So here's just an example of what our conditions of approval will look like, with the underlying areas being the areas of modification from what we're currently doing. And lastly, the recommendation is, staff recommends, the Planning Commission recommends to the City Council to adopt the proposed ordinance, and approve the checklist, and modify conditions of approval. So any questions you guys have?
Thank you.
Happy to answer them.
Let's start with questions, I think we're to Commissioner Morgan, you want to start?
Do you want to cover all three areas?
This is just questions, we'll get to discussion, and then we'll do public, and then we'll go to, and then we'll go to discussion, to just any questions you might have at this point. Yeah, but cover all the areas, please.
Could you please describe what an accessible primary entrance is for the first section? And does that mean that there's no step then between the porch and the house, and is that easy to do?
Yes, that's what it means, is that there wouldn't be a step in. The code requires max half-inch threshold, so that's what it would be, so the person could get into the home. Is it easy to do? Yeah, as long as it's designed that way. Doesn't cost any extra for them to raise the landing up. You know, a lot of builders now, we're seeing, that do that automatically. In the old days, you remember, there'd always be like, you know, a seven-inch or so lowered porch, as you enter the door, and you step up, door swings in. You're finding more and more though, on new homes, that they're doing just level landings at the front.
Does that mean that there's a slope then to get from the lawn to the porch, or is everything level? Is everything, the lawn and the porch and the house all at the same level then?
Well, fully accessible, if you did it for the code, it would be a path of travel to it. We didn't add that into the conditions of approval, because our thought is, if someone can get to the front porch, so maybe they have somebody helping them in a wheelchair, they get onto the porch, then it would be ADA compliant or accessible compliant threshold to get into the home. We didn't take it as far as doing the entire path of travel, because we know that the topography of lots and stuff, it could be difficult, and a lot of people do have two, three steps coming from the driveway to the walkway, and then a step up. This is primarily dealing with the landing at the door with the half-inch threshold to get in. If we wanted to go further, that would be an option. I know there is some cities that do have that, that require no steps from the driveway to the home, but it would, could pose possible issues because of the topography of the lot. So we didn't go there with that one.
And then on the negotiated universal design, the last section, I'm curious if there's ever been any discussion with developers about what the costs, extra costs might be for them to implement these measures? And I guess specifically what I'm thinking about is, some developers, a lot of developers probably have standard floor plans, and they might not include 44-inch hallways, so then if they're gonna build houses in Pleasanton, they have to modify their, you know, architecture structural for the plans, and I'm just wondering whether it's fitting to have those required to all units that are being built, or just a certain percentage of the units that are being built?
Yeah, I mean, the 44-inch hallway is actually, one of the areas that is not in the building code, is 36 minimum. I've been told that, this has been going on, I think, four or five years, and when this originally came up, Council asked for us to go above and beyond the code and come up with additional features. So the building official at the time thought that's an area that could be worked out. Can it be done? Yeah, it can be done. If we start talking to developers, yes, there's probably gonna be discussions about lost floor space in the rooms or living areas, there's those discussions that need to be had. But it can be designed that way, but I do agree, if they're designing, say, a three-story apartment complex that they're designing in another city, and they want to bring that exact same design here, it could pose a problem. I think there is an out, we do have, where, you know, if something is not feasible, it can be reviewed, and the director has the right to waive that, so I think that's where we would go with that if it couldn't be done. But you're right, it does add a little bit of a challenge to design those to 44.
And what are your thoughts about the rationale for requiring it for 100% of the units rather than a certain percentage of the development? For example, if somebody truly does need accessibility, I think they should have everything in the standard, and, you know, maybe even a little more in some cases, but for, for people that don't need it, you know, do they really need to redo all the floor plans for everyone then?
Yeah, so I think it's important to note that most of these buildings are gonna fall under Chapter 11A, and that's already gonna require, it's not gonna require the 44-inch hallway, but it's gonna require the 36-inch hallway, it's gonna require the grab bar backing, because all of those are adaptability features. And those are gonna be required on, like I mentioned, the covered units, which is three or more apartments and four or more condos, and those would already be required on the base code, because they're the bones of the structure that have to be built in. So they're already doing, on our conditions of approval, I'd say probably, what, about 80% of them are already being done on covered multifamily dwellings. Now, if you had like that first photo where it hadn't a staircase going up, and there's only the ground floor, only the ground floor units would have that, the upper units would not.
Okay. And then, could you describe just briefly what an accessible bathtub is? The people I know that are, that need extra assistance, they really like the roll-in showers, even people that aren't truly qualified disabled, maybe they just have a hard time even people that aren't truly qualified disabled, maybe they just have a hard time getting to the tubs, maybe the tub's slippery than a non-stick shower. What type of people are a good fit for an accessible bathtub?
So, accessible bathtub, the dimensions don't change much from a standard bathtub, to be honest with you. It's still 30 inches by 60 inches minimum. The difference is they'll have a clear work, clear space for the wheelchair in front, 30 by 48. The main features would be the grab bars that is, makes them adapt or accessible, I should say. Also, there's a removable seat where they can sit down on, and then the handheld shower spray. That's really the only thing on a shower that makes it accessible. I think it's important to note that not everybody needs that roll-in shower. That's great for wheelchair users, but there's people with other disabilities on crutches, there's people that have medical ailments where they need to soak in the tub, you know, for doctors require them to soak in the tub. So it's important to note that the shower's not always the best fit. I mean, it can be for some and it's not for others. So I think that's why the code for adaptability require, allows both, right? It allows tubs or showers. And usually on multifamily complexes, they do a good mix. They'll do about 5% roll-in showers and they'll do the rest in tub showers as adaptable.
But you didn't want to go so far as to mandate that there be some of each?
So here, we didn't mandate to be actual roll-in. We didn't do that here, I mean, we can look at that. We put 10%, but we gave them the option of either roll-in showers or tub showers. But we put 10% to be fully built out. So right now, I think, I'm trying to make, simplify it, but in the, in Chapter 11B, so if it's a publicly funded multifamily building, the code requires 5% to be fully built out, 2% to be built out for hearing impaired. That's base building code, Chapter 11B. Chapter 11A, which is privately funded, not public funds, multifamily, they don't have to provide any fully built out, but they do have to make them adaptable, which means the grab bar backing would be installed, so they could just come and put the grab bars without tearing into the walls. All the bones of the structures, the hallway widths, the path of travels, the doorway openings, those would all be built in on a privately funded building, but they wouldn't be installed. So I think here, what we try to do is, you know, reach a little bit, because that's what council wants us to do, but still give the option and the ability to have tub or shower. I think when you mandate just one thing like a shower, you're really just kind of tailoring it for one individual, so. That's kind of what the code does as well, so we try to kind of follow the code as a guide on that and not reach too far in one area.
Okay, last question. Did you talk to any developers to understand what the impact to them might be for us, cost? I think I'm thinking especially the wider hallway. And if not, do you then have other information that gives you some sense about whether or not it would increase the cost of, you know, building housing in Pleasanton?
I personally have not. Do you guys know if we reached out five years ago when it came about, Ellen? I wasn't here, so I don't.
I can't speak to any outreach that was done in the first round of this and staff did not consult directly with any developers. We really relied on our experience and expertise of our building official to recommend a suite of improvements that would not add a lot of additional cost. That said, I think we can acknowledge that especially if building plans need to be modified and maybe if you were a, you know, a developer who has a sort of a set library of standard floor plans, which they typically do, that modifying them for special standard in Pleasanton may add a proportion of cost to the architectural planning side of it. But for the most part, the actual construction, we don't feel is significantly more expensive or inherently more complicated, it's just building to a different plan at the time of construction.
Thank you, that's all the questions I have.
Commissioner Nybert? Thanks, Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you for the presentation.
No problem.
What was the, is there an impetus or a driver behind the city council considering this? For example, a number of accidents or complaints, that type of thing?
Not that I'm aware of. I know it's been something that they've discussed for quite a few years. When I came here, I heard about universal design and then as far as pushing it on to single family, when we presented in April, the multifamily portion, we gave the option of single family and I think they liked that option and wanted us to, you know, draft it and bring it to you all for, just for, you know, to see any comments or what your thoughts are on it. But I don't know what the actual driver is, I can't speak to that. I don't know if Ellen has more information.
Yeah, there was a project that was built a few years ago and a disabled resident moved into one of the units and just had a very hard time working with the developer to make sure that the unit met her particular needs or their particular needs. And it was, I think, a challenging process to do that. And so, having heard from that resident about the challenges that she faced, staff was asked, can we do anything to sort of just improve what we're asking of developers upfront to make sure that these are built in and the burden is not falling on individuals' disabilities to have to try and push for and negotiate what they want? So I think that was really the origin of the condition. We've had this condition of approval in place since 2017. It's actually been relatively easy to get developers to agree to make these modifications and to accept this condition, so I think we've had some measure of success with what we have on the books. And just coming back and revisiting, I think we're looking for areas for improvement and can we, can we just push a little bit further than we have in place today?
Okay, so just to be clear and to clarify, we're looking at three different parts of this proposal. The first one has to do with 10 or more single family or duplex or triplex in your developments, right?
Correct.
The second has to do with, and that's, that would be for the universal design ordinance. Second one has to do with the universal design checklist, which would apply to all new for-sale units. Is that, did I read that right?
No, we probably should, I probably should clarify that, that's also for 10. So it's basically the checklist is taking the ordinance and putting it in checklist form. So it would still apply to developments with 10 or more.
Okay, does the checklist apply only as well for single family duplex and triplex?
Yes, only. Yeah, nothing for multifamily, no.
Okay, for example, apartments?
Yes, that's correct. Apartments in either 11A and 11B of the code has a base code of how they have to be built. There's no choosing or mandatory to offer, mandatory to install, it's, you know, the developer has to provide these features. So there's no checklist for that.
And then the third part is the negotiated condition of approval for multifamily projects. And is the 15-unit threshold, what's the reason for the 15-unit threshold? Simply tradition or?
So 15 units and I, someone, I was asked this question separately and I was like, why 15 units? And then I was reminded that 15 units is a threshold for multifamily projects where we start to require inclusionary housing units. And 15 is, I think, was picked because it is consistent with that other standard and I think says something about the sort of size of a project where it begins to make sense to have a little bit more of a burden of costs potentially to require a little bit more, whether it's inclusionary units or these accessibility features. So 15 is consistent with the threshold for inclusionary requirements.
So more for consistency?
Correct. For multifamily.
For multifamily, right. Okay. The, I want to go to the definition again, accessible tub or shower. Is a roll-in shower, well, is an accessible shower always for wheelchairs, a roll-in shower?
Not exactly. You can have a shower with a curb, just, it'd be similar to a tub, it would still have the grab bars at the proper heights, it'd have a folding seat and it would have the adjustable shower head. So there are, there are ways to make a shower, not a roll-in shower, accessible as well by adding those features. And they would be similar to a bathtub. That would be acceptable and they have had projects who've done that where they've actually had a three or four inch curb. Thing is, if you're going to go to that effort of making a shower, usually they're roll-in, that way a wheelchair user can use it. So, but yeah, I've seen them both ways, with curbs as well.
Just approaching, as a layman, my drug would be for, you know, simple roll-in without curbs.
Sure.
In that case. And then an accessible tub, I actually went online and did a quick Google search of the standard ANSI A111.7.1 and certainly didn't look at all of it. But it had some descriptions of specific types of showers and tubs, you know, transfer type showers and accessible tubs with the side doors where you open the door and slide in and a shelf to sit on. To what extent does referencing that standard mandate those types of tubs and showers?
It really, it doesn't. You have the option of doing those and there's a standard to build them, as you researched, right? Where you can do different varieties of that. The code doesn't go into specifying how many of each type of those, because there are side transfers, there's forward approaches, side door opening tubs that you explained. There's many different ways. I mean, the code just says it's a roll-in shower or a tub shower. Doesn't really specify which ones and how many of each you need to provide. So, yeah, we don't go into those types of details. It does have the features, like I said, of the grab bars and the seat and the adjustable shower head to make them accessible. But you could provide any of those that you mentioned.
The photo on that one slide you showed of a accessible tub and shower, it didn't seem to be, just off the top of my head, that it was an accessible tub, just from my own vantage point. It looked like a regular tub with shelves and grab bars.
Yeah.
I mean, how is a regular tub with shelves and grab bars considered accessible?
Well, the idea again is, not everyone is in a wheelchair, so there's people with different disabilities. Some people in walkers that can still lift their leg up over the edge. I know the concern is, right? You got a 16-inch, you know, tub to get over, but there's not, everyone has those disabilities. Some people have upper body disabilities where they can still get in there and sit down. And so it's not really intended to be just for wheelchair users, it's intended for people who need to soak in a tub, so therefore they need to be in a tub that has a 16-inch high wall. So I think the idea and the code has always, accessible means providing some additional features to that tub so, you know, people can use it of different disabilities. I think if a person had the disability where they needed a roll-in shower, then obviously that would be a roll-in shower you'd want to construct for that individual.
Right. Or for example, a tub that had a door.
Yes, exactly. Yep.
Okay.
Unfortunately, the code doesn't know, especially like with apartments, you don't know who the end user is going to be, so they try their best to give options, but that's what the adaptability is for, is if someone requests certain features to be installed, the developer is supposed to install those. But you don't really know who that end user is going to be. So they just try to give a variety of everything with the tub or the shower, but they don't go into specifics like you were researching, unfortunately.
All right. So with regard to the negotiated conditions of approval, part number three, I looked at the numbers of 4% for pre-wiring for doorbells and 10% for required adaptable units to include accessible showers or tubs. Just looking at them, that seemed low to me. Why aren't those figures a lot higher than they are?
We could go higher, we're trying to stay consistent with the code and go just a little bit beyond. So the building code right now, Chapter 11B, requires 5% fully built out, 2% for hearing impaired. We picked 10 and 4 because of TCAC, the Tax Credit Allocation Committee, when they do publicly funded housing, they require 10% and 4%. So we thought that would be good to require on all of our projects, so we're kind of reaching above code, but not going too far. We're a developer, it's a big burden for developers. I think we're still, you know, watching costs and it does cost money to add these features and if you do them to every unit, you know, if you go 50%, it's going to add to the cost. So trying to keep it reasonable, I guess is what we should say and that's where we came up with those numbers.
Okay. And there's no way to look in the future and see what the demand will be for resales or apartment, your rentals in the future by disabled individuals? So I guess we're limited to looking at, you know, what's being built new or what's coming on the market now. And do you have any idea what type of demand, the split in demand between disabled and non-disabled buyers or renters would be currently?
So just based on census data, there's about, about 7.5% of the population of Pleasanton reported some kind of disability. That number increases substantially when you start to talk about seniors. So there's obviously a much higher proportion of seniors have some kind of disability. The census, you know, it, that accounts for every kind of disability from a hearing impairment to an ambulatory difficulty to, you know, all sorts of things, cognitive issues. So it's hard to get your name, your arms around a number. But I think it's reasonable to think that particularly as population ages, that that segment by itself will contribute more demand for accessibility over time, but it's hard to put a number on it.
Right, right. My front of mind concern is primarily about, you know, individuals in wheelchairs and those with, maybe using walkers, mobility requirements that require walkers or such devices. And being able to provide adequately among the stock of housing, you know, for that, wherever demand may exist. And it seems to me right now that's more like, more educated guesswork.
Yeah, I mean, I think even if you were to take ambulatory disabilities, right, that can range from, all the way from someone who uses a walker or, you know, maybe uses a wheelchair some of the time, but's able to get around in other ways, other times. So it's a real, you know, there's a spectrum, as you can imagine. So there's probably data out there on wheelchair users, but I think it's ultimately a relative, it's a fraction of total disabilities. And then again, there's a lot of, you know, gray area I'll say in there in terms of degree of impairment when it comes to being ambulatory or not.
Yeah. With regard to the second item, the checklist, do I understand it right that there's the option for the purchaser to opt out of all of the mandatory installation items?
No, the mandatory installs and items would be provided by the developer and included. The mandatory to offer, they can opt to decide to, you know, have those items or not and then it would be the cost to the homeowner.
I think there is a provision, however, if a homeowner say, says, I don't want all of these things that you're including, they can make that request to the city. I think it's the very last section of the ordinance says that, that they have the ability to make the request to the city and the city can on that basis waive, waive the requirement.
Yeah, this, you're on page nine, I think, of Exhibit A.
It's right, it's right at the end of the ordinance.
Yeah, if they didn't want, yeah, sorry. They could waive it if they wanted to.
It is not mandatory then?
Well, it's mandatory except if the person who would benefit from the improvements doesn't want them. And then they can come in and say, I don't, I don't want these features installed in my unit, don't build them, and the developer and the city can, can agree to do that.
I see. Okay. And then, I'm going near the end of my questions here. In the checklist, page four of seven, under the bathroom, powder room features, bathroom, bathtub and/or shower, I noticed that the accessible bathtub is marked mandatory to install, but the accessible shower is not marked with anything. Why is that not at least mandatory to offer? Or why is it not, you know, combined somehow where one can be included and the other optional?
So, we could probably with standard shower with grab bar reinforcement, make it mandatory to offer. The problem with the roll-in showers is, if you have that mandatory to offer, they have to design that with sunken areas for those roll-in showers. So if you have a PT slab floor, the developers are going to have to actually put a two-inch recess in every bathtub area, shower area I should say, whether the person wants it or not, just hoping that the one person selects that. So that's an additional cost and additional work for the developer to take on. On a raised floor, it's even more cumbersome. We don't see too many raised floors on Utrack anymore, it's all slab pretty much. But they would actually have to frame a lowered floor in that area. So it's quite a bit of work and extra cost, so we thought that would be extensive reach. So we stuck with the bathtub. Like I said, we could make the standard shower with grab bars, sorry, mandatory to offer if you guys like or if you think that's a good idea. Or even a, you know, when it's, there's a shower, we could have them put grab bar backing in, the reinforcement in. Because right now, we just have the grab bar backing for tubs and so we can add it for showers as well.
Okay. That's something I guess we can consider in discussion afterwards.
Sure.
And the only last thing I have is that we reference to standard A117.1. And the only last thing I have is that we reference to standard A117.1 as an extra digit in page two of exhibit A. Or one of the, one of the locations where A117.1 should be, it's as an extra digit, so.
Okay. Thanks, Commissioner Nyberg. Commissioner Allen?
Those are the questions that have been answered. But I want to go back to the design of the bathtub again. So if someone is in a wheelchair, it sounds like the only way the accessible bathtub would work is if in some way they had enough upper body strength or support to help them move from their wheelchair into the bathtub in some way. Is that correct?
Yeah, they would have to, oh, sorry. I didn't mean to speak that loud into the phone. They would have to do a transfer. And the code requires 30 by 48 clear space so the wheelchair can get right alongside the tub and then do a transfer, similar to what a person would transfer onto a toilet seat. Accessible toilets are 17 to 19 inches. Tubs are typically between that same range, 16 to 19, depending on the model. So it'd be a, it'd be a side transfer.
Okay, thank you. I had the same questions as Commissioner Nyberg about those additional mandatory to offer for grab bars in both the bath and the shower. And I also was hoping that the accessible roll-in shower could be a mandatory offering, but I understand some of the complexities of that. Let me just see what I haven't covered. On, on the multi-unit, 15 and above, I'm on page seven of eight, the last item. I wanted to confirm, is it, could we, so the developer has the option of either an accessible shower or a bathtub, and that's their choice. And I'm guessing that most would pick a bathtub because that's probably less expensive. So I think you said earlier, I want to confirm that we could set a standard of five, a minimum of 5% need to be roll-in shower if we chose to, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And, let's see. The other item, I'm thinking of the non-disabled person now. And our checklist for the bathroom, I'm back to page four of seven. We're currently saying that all projects would be designed with an accessible bathtub on one of the bathrooms. So, which could be the guest bathroom in many cases if it's the first floor. So I'm just thinking as a non-disabled person, many people use that guest bathroom as their designer bathroom for guests. And most of these bathtubs are not attractive, right? So I'm, I'm just not sure that on single-family residences, some of the projects like that we've put in that are really nice, you know, 30-unit developments, that people would want to have, that the majority of people would want to have as a requirement, an accessible bathtub in their guest bathroom. Does, what are your thoughts around that?
So I think what you'd have here is you'd have the reinforcement in the walls. You wouldn't have the grab bars. I know the picture showed a fully built-out bathtub that I showed on the slideshow. But it would be, so the accessible bathtub would be the size, right, 30 by 60. And, and then you would also have the grab bar backing in the walls to put the grab bar, but you wouldn't have to install it. So I, I understand what you're saying. The seat is removable. So that seat that's sitting there, that might be not aesthetically pleasing, that's removable. We do see a lot of adjustable shower heads now. That's pretty standard in most developments. People really like those. So really, it wouldn't look too different until you added all those features in. And then I guess here, it's back to what Ellen was saying, is if someone really didn't want it, they could waive that requirement and not have it, the mandatory to install. They could tell the developer, no, I don't want that. I don't want the powder room to be touched. And they could waive that requirement off and sign the waiver on the back.
Okay. Part of me is where I'm going is that, that's a lot of work. I mean, if a lot of people don't want it, and I don't know, I mean, we don't have the data, but if a lot of, if the majority of people don't want to have that, then I hate to see this overhead of every buyer or 80% of the buyers coming to the city and having to opt out because that's a lot of extra work and hassle. So, so let me clarify, this accessible bathtub, there's, it says paren size asterisk and handles. Does that mean that the bathtub doesn't get installed? Or that, that it actually gets installed, an accessible bathtub is installed?
It would be installed and it would be a 30 by 60, which is pretty standard for most bathtubs. The handles would just be to not require tight grisping, pinching, squeezing. So, you know, in the old days, you'd have those knobs that you would turn. Those would not be inaccessible. Now it'd have to be a lever, which I think you'll find, if you go to Home Depot or anywhere, most of the hardware is all lever hardware now. But sure, there is some designer hardware that if someone wanted it installed, it wouldn't comply to the code for being accessible. As far as just going back real quick to, just to mention in 2022, the building code, state law is going to require for single-family, all single-family to have grab bar backing. So that's going to be in the code.
That makes sense. But no one sees that.
Yeah, exactly. Just wanted to point out, yep, yep.
Okay. Okay. So that's, that's kind of on my mind, that, that item. And I would love to have data, if it was there, from developers or others to say how, how practical is it, you know, what's the demand of the average population who's not disabled for accessible bathtubs in their guest bathroom? To kind of know whether that makes sense or not.
Yeah, I think it's going to be a little bit difficult to get that data from developers because we haven't, you know, offered that before. And without doing a poll of people, asking them if they would like that or not, I'm not sure.
Builders building these in now, these days?
No, they're not. And residential, they're not building in any accessibility features because it's not covered under the code.
Yeah. And I think fundamentally, that's, that's really the discussion for the planning commission, right, is, is how far do you want to take this? The model ordinance gives a lot of latitude to adopt a lot of things as mandatory features. It also says you can make them optional. So I think it's entirely within your discretion to recommend a lesser range of accessibility features if you, if you feel like it just goes further than is needed for reasons that you're suggesting. So that's why we're having the conversation and can certainly make adjustments.
Great. Thank you. That's all for me.
Thanks. Vice Chair Gatos?
No questions right now. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Just a couple of quick questions for me. I appreciate the discussion. I think we've been very thorough in, in what we reviewed. So I appreciate everyone's time and attention on this. Obviously, we're being very careful here. And I think it's important, as we're thinking about new construction that would happen in our community and the way it would impact us. And certainly, accessibility is an important part of an inclusive community, which we all strive for. What's the, what's the definition, custom home is an exception that was used. Can you just describe for what a custom home definition would be under the code, please?
Yeah, so custom home would be a one-of-a-kind design, a specific home designed by an architect. There's no other home like it. So if you, for example, you know, Ruby Hill has all, not all, I mean, there's a couple of tracks in there, but most of them are custom homes. That's actually in the model ordinance. That excludes custom homes. And the state law requires that we follow the model ordinance to be as similar or as close to the model ordinance as possible. So that's why it's exempted out of there.
Okay, thank you. And then the, just, I'm just trying to understand, you know, the desire to be inclusive and, you know, kind of stray too far from the model ordinance that you just referenced does create potential risk for the city in terms of a challenge that could occur. How, how are we, can you give us any way to think about, you know, what the parameters are there? I mean, it seems like you've, you've tried to use some useful benchmarks. For example, when you're talking about the 4 and 10% as opposed to the 2 and 5, right? You were, you were pulling in references from other, you know, other codes that would, that would seem to suggest that's a reasonable reference point because it's something that the state is already using, I, you know, which is a reasonable approach. I guess what I'm trying to understand is how much latitude is there as we, as we, as we think about this? I'm, you know, we're not in the litigation business as a city, and so I'm awfully reluctant to propose something that's going to push us there. So how, how should we think about the, how far we can go here?
So the, so the, what you're really talking about, I think, is the, is the condition of approval.
Correct.
And Dan's here and can weigh in as well. But it's clear that we cannot mandate things within multifamily units that are above and beyond the code. But we do have the opportunity as we consider project approvals and conditions of approval to have that discussion and conversation with, with an applicant to say, this is a goal we have as a city to incorporate more accessibility into units. We would like you to include this condition. And the developer might come back and say, great, happy to do this, which, which has been the case for the last five, five years or so with, with the projects that it's been applied to. Or to say, yeah, this is mostly okay, but I'd rather, you know, not do a couple of these things. And so it's a negotiation, right? We don't have a basis to mandate imposition of that condition. But having a policy decision that says we would like you to include this condition, that we prefer affordability, and during the entitlement phase and process, the city has, you know, a certain amount of leverage to try and encourage developers to do things that might be a little above and beyond the, you know, the strict requirements of the building code. And we've had good success in negotiating that. Because it's negotiated and agreed to on both sides, the risk of challenge are, is not there because both parties have agreed that it's reasonable condition of approval.
Thanks. Okay. Do we have, can I ask a follow-up, please?
I'm sorry. Made me think of something. Further units and for the projects that we're talking about requiring this or including this requirement on prospectively, I'm curious what you all think of how often that the developers actually know who the person that's going to be is going to live there before they build this. Because it seems, you know, if the homeowner requires, but I mean, how often do we have units sold before they're constructed by most developers in the area? And with prospectively for the city, what type of units and developments are we talking about? Are they the type of developments that people are going to buy ahead of time, pre-construction? Or are they the type of units that are going to be finished and then shown and then sold? And then by then, you know, you know, they don't have the option of saying, oh, I want you to do this or X. So it seems like we ought to err on the side of at least, you know, making it as, making the requirements as easy on the developers as possible. So when you walk into a place where, you know, a prospective buyer doesn't need these accommodations, it doesn't jump off the page that they've made it look, you know, a certain way that's not attractive to the normal person because they're keeping the option open of all these modifications. But at the same time, making it easy for someone to make the possible modifications. It doesn't, it just seems to be that if it's required in, you know, all, you know, not all the units or, you know, maybe it just should be required in some, that they're going to have a tough time figuring out who's going to be actually in these things before they're built. So, yeah.
Yeah. So, I mean, we are seeing, I think, a lot, well, and maybe this is about to change with, you know, interest rate changes, but subdivisions generally have been securing buyers before homes are fully constructed. We're seeing it at the Lund Ranch project, that lots are being pre-sold. And so there is that opportunity to have that discussion with, with the buyer, much like you would ask them if you want the super-duper fancy countertop or the less expensive countertop or the, you know, fancy carpeting or something less expensive. So the options that are typically discussed, this would be another thing on that list of options. But to your point, you're absolutely right, right? This is the balance of upfront requirements that may be above and beyond the needs of many people. And ensuring that those things are in there, which may be redundant or unnecessary for many of the residents, or, or leaving it open and not running the risk of not having them in there at all. So, you know, and I think there's, you can argue it both ways. You know, again, we have an aging population. Folks are wanting to age in place in their homes. And so sometimes having these features might not be something you're thinking about today. But, you know, if you've been living in a house for 10 or 15 years, it may become a need that develops over time. And thank you, Melinda. And multi-generational living is becoming more of a, more of a factor. So people have their parents living with them. And it's nice to be able to offer accessibility to, to those, to those older, older family members. So it's, you know, again, it's, there's a reason why the model ordinance is written the way that it is because it wants to offer jurisdictions the ability to have this conversation and make a decision about how much is required versus how much is, just something that you can build into a project at the request of a buyer.
And I think, just to add to that, too, a lot of the features are not built out, right? A lot of it is backing behind walls. It's wider doorways. I mean, if you go to most homes, a 32-inch doorway, that's pretty standard. I know my in-laws had a tract house from the 70s and it had 24-inch doors into the bathroom. You'd never get a wheelchair in there. So I think a lot of these features just now are standard in construction. They're putting the wider doorways in. 36-inch hallway is very standard. So I don't think you're going to see a lot of it, maybe with the exception of the front entryway being at half-inch threshold. But there, again, like I mentioned, there's a lot of homes being designed and built that way. So, and then on top of that, the 2022 code is going in the aging in place direction, which is already going to provide mandatory for every house and every new construction. The light switches at 48, the receptacles at 15, the grab bar backing in the bathrooms. So I think we're going to see that more and more every code cycle, get a little bit more stringent. So just wanted to add to that. Thank you.
Please.
One more quick question related to Commissioner Allen's comments. Could you please, one more time, tell me what the definition is of accessible tub or shower, sink and toilet? You were talking about how it requires those to be available, but not necessarily built out. For example, not the grab bars, but what is the accessibility, what is included in that?
So if you had an accessible tub, 30 by 60 is the minimum dimension that the code requires.
Size.
Size of the tub, which would be 30 inches wide, 16 inches, which is a standard tub, so to speak. Then you would have the grab bars installed if you made it fully accessible. If it's adaptable, it would just have the backing and the wall. The seat on the back of the tub, that can be a removable seat. It's not required to be installed or permanent. And then the handheld shower, the adjustable shower head on handheld shower, that's really the only features of an accessible tub. It's just basically taking your standard tub shower that you may have in your house and adding some features to it to make it more usable for someone with disabilities.
So for the universal design ordinance, then, would, would every house have to have a bathroom that has grab bars?
No. So what it would be is it would just have to have the backing in the wall, which is already going to be required by the California Residential Code in 2022 that we're going to adopt here in the fall. And that'll be state law. So those, the grab bar backing will be in place, but the grab bars will not have to be installed. That's, it would be optional for the user to install if they, if they need to or choose to.
So you could argue that it really doesn't look much different than a regular bathroom other than the size of?
Yes, that's, I would agree with that.
Okay. All right. Let's close questions from the commissioners and see if we have any questions from the public.
No speaker cards were received.
Okay, thank you. So we're going to close the question period and proceed to discussion. Do you, do we need a vote here? Are you just looking for, for feedback that you will take to the council?
So we are asking for a formal recommendation tonight because we would be bringing the ordinance forward to the, to the council for adoption. So I think a formal motion would be appropriate.
Okay. So.
On the ordinance itself, not, not the other two pieces, is that correct?
Well, I would make it as one motion because there are really three, there's really three parts to it. You'd be welcome to bifurcate, bifurcate the motion if you wanted to make different decisions on them, but it would be helpful to.
Can you just, can you put up all three questions then so we can see that at once? Is that a way to do that, please?
Yeah, sure.
And then, and then, so what I'll ask that we do here to try to, you know, make time work efficiently and reciprocal to each other is, I'll just, we'll run down the list. I'll ask you to make your comments. And then if, if you have something that you'd want to propose, maybe let, let's just hold that until we've had everyone make their comments and then we can, we can entertain motions. Does that work for everyone?
Yes.
Okay. So let's start with, I think we started with Commissioner Morgan last time. So we're going to start with Commissioner Nyberg this time, please.
With regard to the ordinance, opposed ordinance?
Yeah. So the questions are up, are up there.
The three bullets, yeah, draft, develop and update.
So my, my, regardless, depending for the non-ambulatory members of our community and how they can be most readily addressed, although I, you know, I respect all the disabilities that we're trying to address here. I think, you know, veterans and seniors most often exhibit the type of non-ambulatory disabilities that I'm talking about.
Hey, Commissioner Nyberg? Hey, Commissioner Nybert, can you turn your phone?
I'm sorry.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah. So with regard to non-ambulatory disabilities, my focus was on the bathtub and the shower, so the bathroom. And I would like to see perhaps a higher percentage of required adaptable units for requiring those to be present, and also a modification in the checklist in regard to what is included, what's optional, and our recommendation in regard to that.
Okay, and so that's just your sense of where things are as opposed to? I guess I just want to make sure I understand, because I'm cognizant of the departure from the model issue and the potential litigation risk there. So can you just help me understand? You just want a bigger number, or was there some other data you were pulling to that you were pointing us to? Just so we can be clear.
With regard to risk, I think you're talking about the ordinance itself, right? The proposed ordinance, which is based on the model ordinance. I have no data per se, except my own sense that with the demand that we're going to have in the city with the aging population, multigenerational households, that maybe a slightly higher percentage would be advisable when it comes to the text of the ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, Commissioner Nybert?
No.
Okay, thanks. Commissioner Allen?
All right, so first is on both the ordinance and the checklist, and I'll just use the checklist as my reference, but they go together. On page four of seven, under the bathroom, I would propose that we add MO, mandatory optional option for standard bathtub with grab bars, and also mandatory option for standard shower with grab bars. And also reinforcement, standard shower with grab bar reinforcement. I would like those to be mandatory option. I want to put on the table that I'm divided on this accessible bathtub. I was, by leaning would be to change that from MI to MO, optional. However, Commissioner Morgan's questions led me to think that maybe there's not a visibility issue or a design issue, but that was different than the feeling I was getting 10 minutes earlier. So.
So let's ask a clarifying question, just to make sure, because it sounds like that's an important one, as we're just trying to build consensus. Is that okay? So can you just walk us through the accessible bathtub, since there's a question on that here, please?
Yeah, absolutely. So the accessible bathtub will be 30 by 60 inches, 30 inches wide, 60 inches deep. The area in front of the bathtub will have a 30 by 48 clear space, so someone in a wheelchair can maneuver. It'll have grab bar backing, but not the installed grab bars themselves. Have the ability to put a seat on top of the shower, but that's a removable, it's not a permanent seat. It has an adjustable shower spray head, and that's all it has. It does have the controls, and I should have mentioned, the controls devices are slightly lowered, but nothing that's going to stand out as, wow, this is a fully built-out bathtub.
So, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to ask a clarifying question, if one's a developer. Because I've looked at all these pictures, right?
Sure.
Of accessible bathtubs, and they're ugly.
Yeah, they're fully built out.
All right. So I'm sort of just thinking, in all practicality, is a developer going to buy one of those types of plastic things that we see most likely and install it? Or are they going to have a nice-looking bathtub that would look like a guest bathroom designer look?
My thought is they would go ahead and do a standard bathtub, 30 by 60, that you're going to see in everyday bathroom, and then they're going to have these features that you can add to that.
Okay. All right, so based on that, I'm fine with keeping this MI.
Okay.
But I will say, if other people are open to turning it optional, I'm also okay having it be optional and having the buyer pay extra if they choose the feature. And I'll tell you my reason why. My reason why is that I don't want to see all these buyers coming to the city to have this taken out, because that's a lot, it's cost for the developer and the city, and it's a mess. And if someone comes in later and if the bathtub is ugly, it's a problem. So I think the safest option is actually going MO on that one. All right, and my other comment is in regards to page seven of eight of the staff report, which has to do with the multi-units and what we want to negotiate with developers. The last item currently is proposing 10% of units would include either an accessible shower, roll-in shower, or an accessible bathtub in at least one bathroom. I have two things I would propose, one I feel strongly about, and that is, I think at least 5% of those adaptable units should include a roll-in shower. The additional 5% could be either/or. So that's my base.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can I just ask a clarifying question?
Yes.
Understand?
Yeah.
So you wouldn't change the 10%, but you would say that 5% must be shower, and then the other 5% could be either/or?
Correct.
Okay.
That's what I'm proposing.
Thank you.
And that's where my comment was heading, even though I didn't specify the numbers, but I do agree with Commissioner Allen, with the exception, I think the 10% should be higher.
Okay, all right.
And that was going to be my second point, would be, I'd be open to a higher number than 10%. I wouldn't want it more than 15%. But I'm open to that, but I also am sensitive that it could be an overkill, and it does drive up pricing. And we always know that if developers add more here, they're going to come back to us and say, well, if I add these costs here, I need to take away some of the other things you're asking me for, like the park, and like maybe some of the affordable things that I otherwise would have done, because it's all part of a game.
There's economics.
There's economics. So I don't want to do, so I'm okay with 10%, but I'd be open to going higher if others were.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Appreciate it. Commissioner Allen? Okay, Commissioner, excuse me, Vice Chair Gatos?
I agree with those comments. What I kind of sketched out as my concern for discussion was that, thinking of somebody building an over-15 unit, you know, obviously not single-family homes, condominium complex, and I think it's important to, you know, I've never had to be in a wheelchair forever for any reason, but I'm thinking if you were, and we've had folks coming in here talking about, from various local agencies, you know, actually when I was on the Housing Commission, about from Abode Services and other places, and they've, I'm surprised none of them are here speaking tonight, to be honest. Maybe it's just, you know, they don't pay attention to every agenda we have. But I agree with, from a builder's perspective, once you make a plan to do something, like, Rob, like you said, going back and making a recessed shower pan is very difficult to do. I used to be in the trades, I understand that. I think it's good to specify if we're going to require, you know, roll-in showers, that it be done. But I'm thinking, maybe it's worth thinking about requiring that on, you know, obviously developments over 15 units, on like, you know, some percentage of the ground floor units to make sure that those are accessible for folks in wheelchairs. You know, obviously, they can go up elevators and do that, but, you know, maybe there's a chance to have them, give them a heads up to build that into the foundation that they're pouring ahead of time, because going back and doing that afterwards is really tough to do. So I support that. I just wanted to throw the idea out there about if it is 15 or more units, and maybe not your single-family home project, but more your condominium multi-unit is specifying on, I guess it would be the, do we need to distinguish covered or uncovered in that situation, or not?
Sorry. Yeah, it'd be for covered.
Okay, covered.
Covered units.
And unstared, I mean, because I think, obviously, there could be situations where the, there's only way to get up to the upper units of stairs. The only opportunity to do that would be on the ground floor.
Yes.
So I think, you know, requiring some percentage, and if we're talking about 10 or 15%, that, you know, that the 5%, if we go with that, of the, you know, kind of the showers we're talking about, be on ground floor units to make it accessible. I think that probably aims at the needs we're all trying to get at. So that's my comments on the discussion.
So can I, sorry, let me just ask a clarifying question. If the unit, if it's a 15 or more unit, and there are stairs to get up to the second-story units, then what is determined as covered is only the ground floor units, right?
That is correct.
Okay, so I don't think we need to play with the definition to get that.
Okay.
Right? Okay. Thank you. Anything else?
No, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Morgan, please.
I support Commissioner Allen's suggestion that we have a mandatory requirement for the roll-in showers. And I don't know if 5% is the right number, but it sounds pretty good, so I support what she recommended on that. And I also would be interested to hear whether other commissioners have any views on this, but for the universal design ordinance, my inclination would be that the roll-in showers, to make that a mandatory option, so that if someone wanted a roll-in shower and they were willing to pay for it, even though it's quite expensive and requires modifications to the flooring, I would like to see them have that option to do it if they're willing to pay for it. And I'm assuming that in that case, the developers kept hold and they wouldn't incur any cost, because they would be passing them on to the buyer. So I'm not too concerned about cost, because the buyer wants it and they're willing to pay for it. And then, the one item, I guess, that gives me maybe more heartburn than anything else is the 44-inch minimum hallway and 32-inch clear door opening, because I'm a bit uncomfortable that they might then have to go back and redo all of their housing plans for developments there. So I guess I would either make that optional, or I would consider getting some input from developers before I adopted that, at least in an ideal world.
Could I just clarify a comment?
Please, please.
To Commissioner Morgan's question about the mandatory showers. If I understood you, I believe you were making an assumption that if mandatory showers were optional and someone paid for them, that the developer would not incur any additional expenses. Is that, that was kind of what I heard, correct?
That they would be kept hold because they would be passing those costs.
Because they'd be passing the costs along. So the question to you, Rob, is I thought I heard you say something about, but everyone would have to have a sunken, that the developer, ahead of time, not knowing who would pay or not, would have to actually incur a cost to create some kind of sunken platform to support that infrastructure?
That would be if it was mandatory to install, then yes, they would have to do that to every home. If you did mandatory to offer, you could offer it. The only challenge with that is you're going to have to have a buyer early on, because that would take place before the foundation is poured. It would have to be a revision to the plans. They would come in, submit plans. Engineering would have to get involved if it's like a post-tension slab, as far as the structural engineer, that's what I should say. So there would be a significant amount of work that would have to happen upfront and cost. But if the, you know, if the homeowners want to pay for that, and they catch it in time, you know, if the house is sold at sheet-rock stage, it's going to be, probably could still be done, but it's going to be extremely difficult, because now they're going to have to chip concrete, and if there's post-tension cables, they're going to be really careful, and it could cost the developer or the homeowner quite a bit of money.
I could live with that. I was thinking of the buyer that was getting in very early and buying before any work had been done.
That's for mandatory offer, I'm sorry. That's for mandatory offer, I think is a good option.
So I was just going to say, it's very doable. Let's just take the Erby Ranch development as an example, just because that's one of the more recent ones, or the Ponderosa Valley Trails. You know, typically, most developers, you know, they're going to build, if it's 30 units, 30 total units, and they'll typically have three to four model homes that buyers can choose from. So to start out, they're going to build one of each to begin with, so a buyer can physically go and look at it. So the example with Erby, it's not quite apples-to-apples, but there was a resident who wanted to do different windows and other elements, and related to Feng Shui, and the lot that she picked was already in the framing stage, and they couldn't do it. So then the developer went to her and said, well, I have another lot for you that I haven't even started grading yet, or haven't started with the foundation yet, so I can make all those changes at your cost. And they submitted a revision, as Rob explained, to building, and were able to do all those. So it really just comes down to timing, and it is doable. It wouldn't happen with the first phase, but it could happen with the subsequent phases. And I also just wanted to make one comment you said earlier regarding the hallway widths and the door openings. The majority of the, again, let's pick on Erby and Ponderosa, since those are our most recent developments, or even some of the multifamily products. It's very rare that there is a cookie-cutter design from another community that ends up being built here in Pleasanton, right? I really feel that we pride ourselves on really having applicants go through the design review process with your input, with council's input, with the community's input, that 90% of the time, a lot of the plans that maybe started out were, that were the developer's base model, they end up getting tweaked and they get modified in order to fit the Pleasanton expectations. 44 inches is wider, but again, with multigenerational, aging in place, open floor concept, we're actually seeing a lot of just different designs than we saw from, you know, say, 10 years ago.
I'm very comfortable with the 36-inch hallways and the 32-inch doorways. I just don't necessarily want to create a standard that requires some housing units in the community to have even a higher standard that wouldn't necessarily apply to other units in the community. So they have a mixture of apples and oranges. And so I'm just a bit reluctant to feel comfortable with that, unless we had some comments from developers. If we had comments from developers and they said that was no problem, then, you know, I could sleep good knowing it wasn't going to be a problem. But that's the one I would be inclined to make optional without developer input. And that's just me. I'm interested to know what the other commissioners think, because I don't feel very strongly about it either.
Could I? Maybe clarify? I think Commissioner Morgan brings up a fair point. And possibly, if we do a motion on this, it would be possible for you to do some vetting of this item prior to this going to the council? If we set it up in a way that sort of said we would approve this or that, but it's contingent upon developer input that would go this way?
That is possible. I just wanted to just make sure I'm understanding, because the 44-inch hallway width is only for the multifamily projects, and it's part of that negotiated condition of approval.
Oh, it's only the multifamily.
So ultimately, if a developer says, you know what, I can't, I just can't make this work with my unit types, or, you know, structurally, it just creates too many ripple effects in my project, we could agree to not require that. And so I don't know if that makes a difference at all to your thinking, but we do have the ability through the review process to talk about specifics and to push for it, but to waive it if, or to not include it if that's, if it's just not feasible to do so.
That makes a difference in my thinking. I can't speak for others. What it says is there's, if there's that option. We don't need to talk to developers in advance, they'll tell us when we ask for it.
Ken, what's your reaction to that?
I can support that. I'm interested in whether the commissioners think about having one standard that requires 44 inches for certain types of residences, but not for other types of residences. That's the one area I'm still struggling with a bit.
So I haven't weighed in, so let me just do that. So uniformity, I think consistency is an important part of people coming here and trying to build. Developers are going to make decisions around what they want to do and how complex or easy it's going to be. And so I think if there is an ability to say, this is something that looks easy, as opposed to this is something that's different than every other place that we ever try to build, that's going to make it hard. We have spent weeks of our lives working on trying to get more housing to get more housing into this community. And so I feel like adding more burden in these details, while important, makes it really hard. And so we're making trades, it's just going to make it harder in the city. And so I'm inclined towards reducing the burdens here while we are still trying to find ways to make this community more accessible for everyone. And so I'm inclined to things, I think Nancy, that you had proposed. I'm, I'm pretty disinclined to start messing with numbers overall. I'm very worried about litigation challenges, whether it's from some of our neighbors or from people outside the community. We've had lots of changes going in the city that we don't have any control over. And so unless we can find that, you know, I think, Rob, the description you provided early on about the way in which the city, excuse me, the state, has thought about where exceptions might be possible, which is you've, it's very limited, you've got to do a bunch of work, and you've got to come up with the, we haven't done that. And as is shown here tonight, we don't, there's a lot of data we don't have. And so I'm awfully reluctant to start imposing numbers that are higher than anything that's been proposed. Nancy, I love your idea, excuse me, Commissioner Allen, I love your idea about taking advantage of some of the numbers that we do have and framing those in a way that doesn't require, that doesn't, that doesn't necessarily change what I think would be potentially a, a litigable limit, but does allow us to get more types of, of certain features in the city. So that, that's where I, where I land on it. Okay? So let's, I'll play, please.
Yeah, whenever I said that, you know, I, a current concern specifically about the non-ambulatory disabled, I'm thinking primarily in terms of safety. The numbers in here, as I look at them, I'm kind of using a safety lens and thinking about, you know, what kind of balance might we have between the economics and ensuring the safety of our elderly and non-ambulatory population in the new homes that we build. You know, falls in showers, hence my focus on showers, can be, you know, very costly, very deadly, very, you know, injurious to people. And so that's where I'm coming from whenever I look deeply at what I'm discussing.
Okay, thank you. So let's, do we have any motions that we would like to try to entertain here? Let me, I can, I tried to write down Nancy, what I think you did. I, so I think the motion that I would propose would be one that largely accepts what was proposed by staff. And let me just do a side note here. As usual, I think the staff has invested enormous time, energy, and resources here and great thought into trying to do something that I think makes this community better. So I'll just appreciate, appreciate that. And I know, you know, and I know that that's a consistent theme. So thank you, thank you for the work. That said, you know, I do think that there are, there are some modifications we'd, we'd like to make. The first would be on the, on the multi-unit proposal where we were talking about the 10%, would be of the 10%, make a mandatory 5% to shower, and then the other 5% could be either/or, shower or bathtub.
Roll-in shower, right?
Could be any, yeah.
Roll-in shower.
Yeah. Okay. And then the second would be, I'm not supportive of the 44 inches. I don't know how others feel, so I'm going to table that one for a minute, because I don't know that I have consensus there. So I'm going to table that one for a minute. The second one, I think, was about the accessible bathtub, whether to make it mandatory install or mandatory optional. Nancy, I don't, I don't-
Do you want to do the checklist down?
Checklist, page four, I said.
Yeah, checklist on page four.
The ordinance.
Yeah. So I don't think I had anything else on the ordinance. Did I miss anything that we had talked about on the ordinance?
No. I talked about the checklist, but it backs into the ordinance, I think.
Yeah. The one, one thing on the ordinance was that I would propose, say, 12 to 15%.
Yeah, I'm not going to support that. So, so that's not going to be part of my motion, because I don't, I don't, I don't think we have the backing for that. I don't think we have the data for that. And I'm, I'm just not going to support it, got to answer.
Can I just clarify for a moment? I think you might be actually referring to the condition of approval for multifamily, which is where the percentages come in. Separate from that is the ordinance and related to the ordinance, the checklist. So just wanted to make sure that was clear for the, for the record.
Okay.
That, that's correct. The 10%, and I think you were discussing earlier, Chair Pace, was the, was the condition of approval on page seven of eight.
And the 44-inch hallway is also in the condition of approval.
So I'm going to, so, this is complicated.
Well, let's see, on conditions of approval, then, which is multifamily.
Yeah, so maybe let's do that.
Let's do that first.
Conditions of approval. So it would be that the 10% that we talked about, right? And in the conditions of approval, that's where the, that's where the hallway width is. So my motion would be to not have the 44 inches in there. Now, I don't know if I've got unanimity on that one, so I think we're going to have to talk about that. But that's, that would be my motion, okay? So I think that covers it for the conditions of approval. And so then I would go down to the, to the checklist. And on the checklist, I would propose that the accessible bathtub be mandatory offered, and that the roll-in shower would be mandatory offered. Maybe it's optional, and I'm butchering the, what MO means, but that's, that's what I'm proposing. Okay? Did I cover, I think I-
The only thing you didn't, so those, those were correct. And then the other things that I was proposing would be mandatory-
Oh, I'm sorry, the grab bars?
Yeah, optional.
And that's the backing, not actually putting the bar in, but the, doing the backing, right?
Doing the backing, but also the option, if they wanted the grab bars installed, they could pay for it.
Putting the bars in would be MO.
It'd be MO. So would the, yeah, the backing would be MI.
The backing is going to be required.
The backing will be required under the 2020 code, so that's why it's under mandatory install.
So, so putting in the bars, putting in the bars for both the, what is it, for the shower and the tub?
And the tub would be MO.
Would be MO.
Yeah.
Yeah, I apologize for missing that one.
So therefore, may I kind of summarize what was just said there?
Please.
Under bathtub and shower, the four items from accessible bathtub down to accessible rolling shower, all four of those items would become MO.
Yes.
That's right.
Okay.
Okay. So that's, that's my motion. And I realize that I put in one that I think, I don't know if I have unanimity on, which is the 44 inches, taking that one out. But I think the other ones, I think we were large, largely aligned. So let me see if there want, if people want to discuss that motion, or if someone wants to make a competing motion.
How about if we just discuss the, the inches, the 44 inches?
Okay, great.
Just a little bit more on the pros and cons, and the standards. Because what's the standard, what's the standard on the inches for the checklist?
Are we talking about the hallway now?
Yeah, the hallway. So the negotiated one-
The negotiated one says 36, well, it's 44.
36 today, though, right?
Yeah, the code requires 36.
Yeah.
So 36 would be standard because it's required by chapter 11.
And today you're using 36, and you're just proposing to increase it to 44?
Yeah, that was the proposal for the condition of approval. That's what's been in there since 2017. And I think, as Ellen said, it could be, you know, that's negotiable with the developers. That's why it was in there. But 36 is standard, and that's standard. It's not just for covered, it is standard code. 36-inch hallways are standard for egress. They're standard for, every building is 36-inch minimum hallway.
And that's enough for a wheelchair?
Yes.
And that's, and that's what our standard is as well for the check, the check for single-family homes and it's 36.
Yes.
So, so I, I come out saying simplicity and consistency is important, and it, it meets accessibility needs. 36 sounds sufficient to me.
Okay.
And for clarity, I think the doorway two then would be 32. So 36 and 32 for the doorway versus 44 for the hall and 36 for the doorway. So those two go together. That's what I proposed.
Yeah, the doorways are always 32 inches. The code requires 32, even in chapter 11. So, and that's consistent with now the residential code requiring it's all 32 inches clear. And that's clear, so it's not a 32-inch door. It's clear, so that would be framed as a 34-inch door minimum to get that 32-inch clear.
Yeah, and then if you wanted to put in whatever around it, it's-
Yeah, because you have the door stops and the door swings in. So when they say it's written as 32 inches clear with the door opened at 90 degrees, is how the code reads.
Okay, so it's actually going to be bigger than that when you, when you put it in, but you're going to get clearance at 32.
Yes.
Great.
Just a clarifying question on that. The, this is talking about the condition of approval, right?
Uh huh.
Part D, or letter item D, we're talking about the 44-inch minimum hallway width. That's currently part of the condition of approval, is it not?
Yes.
So are we talking about reducing that from the current number? Yes.
Yes.
Why would you reduce it from the current number?
I, I just explained what my motion was.
Well, I understand, but if we're insisting on this or recommending this to developers in our current negotiations on conditions of approval, why pull back?
I just explained what my reasons were.
I, I understand, but I guess I'd like to hear from the other commissioners as well.
Well, I'd like to ask staff a question, because I'm not understanding why 44 was ever added in the beginning to this negotiated, I thought you said it was, that it wasn't being, 44 wasn't being used before. But why did 44 get added when it's not added to single-family homes and other areas?
So I can't speak for 2017, because I was not here. What I've heard from discussions with my predecessor is that council wanted to go above and beyond code, and they thought that was one area. Since code requires a 36-inch minimum width, and these are negotiated conditions of approval, that could be negotiated with a developer. It wouldn't be too much to ask for 44. And then if there's a reasoning behind not doing it, it could be negotiated out. And that was kind of the thought process when it came up in 2017.
So I get that. But why ask, what's the user need for it, is my question. Are other cities doing it? Are wheelchairs getting larger and it's needed? I mean, what's the need for it?
There are different sized wheelchairs, depending on, you know, body size of individuals. There are wider wheelchairs, the standard, and the typical is 27 inches. So I think it was an idea to have a wider, so it could, you know, it's more accessible to wider wheelchairs. It's more mobility features as far as having more room to maneuver the wheelchair in. That's what I understood from talking to the previous building officials. So I think that's where the 44-inch came in. But the code does require 36 inches. That's in 11A, 11B, it's standard. It's been there for years, and that hasn't changed. So 36 inches is the standard.
Are there other cities in the Bay Area that require greater than 36 inches or 44 inches, or would this make us unique?
Not that I'm aware of. I'm not aware of any other cities requiring it. Seen out there built, typically we'll see a 48-inch hallway, especially in custom homes. 36-inch hallways just usually aren't done unless they're apartments or condos where the spaces are tight and they need to maximize all the space in the unit. But when you start going into single-family homes, you don't see a lot of 36-inch hallways. There's a lot of, like Melinda said, open floor concepts, and people tend to go, when they do hallways, 48 inches. But in apartments, 36 is standard. We see that a lot in apartments and condos.
So where do other people come out on this, this point?
So if it's a, it's a negotiable condition of approval. So it can go down for any project if the city, you say okay, essentially, right?
Yes.
And if it's set 44, I mean, can, if it's, if we set it at 36 or 44, if it's, yeah, if it's set at 36, can you require it to go up, or is that like a, you can only go down sort of thing?
I would say it's harder.
To go up.
We're already asking for, for more, and so, you know, asking for even more is obviously a harder, a harder discussion.
Understood, thank you. I mean, is this, is this an issue that comes up often, where, I mean, it'd come up to where people, we required, or it's, it's at 44, and, you know, they say, I really can't do that, we need to go down to 36. Has that happened in Pleasanton in the last, since 2017?
I haven't been on any of the negotiations at the planning stage. I'm usually involved with cuts to the planning, so I think you guys can fix it up.
Just curious, how much of an issue we're creating at that?
No, it's not been an issue to my knowledge. I've been here since when I start 2016. So it's not been an issue.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so we have, do we want to do a new motion? Does, do we want to vote on this one? I just want to help us move along here.
Yeah, I'm prepared to support your motion. I think it's appropriate. I, I agree that at some point, the, the city could ask for more, but I don't know that if it's been an issue at 44, it'll be an issue at 36. And it sounds like, practically speaking, the only projects that are going to have that are going to be, you know, your, your multi, you know, your multi-areas, and we've addressed some issues for that. So I'll, I'll second the motion as made by Commissioner Chair Pace.
Which, which is, which is 36, correct?
Yes.
I would support it as well.
Okay, so should we do a vote, then? Because we've got a second. Go into a roll call, please.
Just clarification. We're talking about the condition of approval, and we're talking about change in the checklist. Are we talking about any other changes later on, or is this the?
This is it.
This is it. Okay.
Is there something you'd like to propose, something else to change?
Well, I still, I think that the 10% in the condition of approval for the accessible showers and bathtubs could be higher. I understand the reasoning that you stated. But I guess I'm willing to, to back off on that.
Okay.
So I'll support your proposal.
Okay, all right. So let's just do a roll call. It sounds like it's going to be a 5-0, but let's-
Okay. Commissioner Allen?
Aye.
Gatos?
Aye.
Morgan?
Aye.
Nybert?
Aye.
And Chair Pace?
Aye. That passes, thank you. So I think you all have what you need, so we can move on to the next gen item. Great, thank you. So on to gen item number seven, which is reports from meetings attended. So I'll just run down the list of the commissioners. I'll start. I think I haven't started yet. So I did not attend any meetings. So then we'll go to Commissioner Allen.
No meetings attended.
Vice Chair Gatos?
No meetings.
Commissioner Morgan?
No meetings.
Commissioner Nybert?
Also no meetings.
Okay. Next item is actions of the city council. We're getting a report from Ellen.
Yeah, just, just very briefly, at the June 21st meeting, the council approved a memorandum of, of understanding that will govern future uses at the Bernal Community Park, future community garden. So that MOU was put in place, and we're continuing to meet and discuss with the master gardeners how they would like to move their program forward in the next few years. Council, on July 19th, council approved the consent calendar. And then the most significant item was the council's discussion of the housing element on July 19th. After some discussion, I think the most significant change was the decision to remove the Donlin School housing site from the list, mostly based on widespread comment from Donlin neighbors in opposition to that. And the, and the school board, as a result of that input, requested that the city remove that site from the list. So that's no longer going forward. The rest of the site list remains as is, and will continue through the environmental process and through the HCD review process as well. The council also made some relatively small adjustments and modifications to some of the policies and programs to just put a finer point on a few items there. So that was the gist of the, gist of the changes. With, with that, we will submit our draft to HCD, hopefully within the next couple of weeks. And that will start the 90-day state review process and, and come back to the commission and to council at the end of the year.
And what does the EIR do?
The EIR is due to be published, I believe, in September. So we're just reviewing the first batch of administrative draft chapters, get a few more coming. So that'll, that'll be on the streets, I think in September is the target date.
Is the, is the process for getting approval or not, is that, in my experience with some other approval matters that, that go before regulatory and government bodies, it's often a slow yes and a fast no? Are we, are we expecting it to, to run the full 90 days, or do we expect we're getting an answer sooner?
The experience has thus far been that the state is taking the full 90 days to provide their formal comments. We do expect that we will engage with HCD staff, you know, to get informal comments, answer questions, things like that. So we'll probably have a sense of where their comments are coming from. But it's unlikely we will get formal comments until probably day 89 of the comment period. They're just, you know, they're reviewing all of the Bay Area cities' housing elements. They are still completing review of the Southern California jurisdiction housing element. So their staff is busy, and I think will take the full, the full time they need.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let's go to future planning calendar. Back to you, Ellen.
Very short report.
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Okay, Melinda, appreciate that. Well done. All right, matters initiated by members. We'll start with Commissioner Allen.
So I'm just wondering, given nothing to report on the future planning calendar, does that mean that the next meeting may be canceled, or where are you at?
Yes, there's a high probability.
Yes, there's a high probability the next meeting will be canceled, but I've got a couple of items in the queue for the second meeting in August.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Gatos?
Vice Chair Gatos? Nothing to initiate, thank you.
Commissioner Morgan?
Just wanted to thank Rob for very thorough review and clear explanations on this matter. And I'm just thinking about what ifs, you know, if there was some inclination that the city council did want to consider wider hallways, doorways, I would recommend that we talk to a few developers, just to understand what the impact of that would be. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner Nybert.
Just thanks also to the staff and to Rob, and I appreciate all the work that's been done.
We'll have to bring him back more often.
He's jonesing, you can see it. He wants to be back.
Every building official I've ever worked with loves nothing more than to appear before the commission and council.
All right, I don't have any, so I'm going to adjourn the meeting. Thanks, everyone, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.